Do that again?
Oh, we are recording.
Okay. So the meeting, this meeting's opened. And you, Jeff wanted to make a comment before we-
Just a quick comment and statement here and just full disclosure. I have to say that in a, this will make sense after I'm done. In a prior marriage, I had a stepdaughter, the stepdaughter is married to Chris. I see this as no conflict. And I talked with counsel and there's no conflict there either.
Okay, well, we always start off with a statement of, from each individual as to whether they want to recuse themselves for anything. So Marina, if you want to follow along on that.
Okay, do you mind if I have any comments?
No.
On this room, any comments?
No.
And that's right, any comments?
No. Okay, good. All right. Then I'll open this meeting. Just to review, the last meeting we got together on was on the 12th. And you presented plans that we reviewed for information. This board cannot make decisions, as you know, until it goes through a planning zoning board. And we're in that position again tonight. But you have some new plans that you've submitted to us. Let me just very briefly review the key comments from the last meeting of the 12th. Normally, we cover mass and scale first, which we did at the last meeting. But we also touched on style a little bit. And the comments about on mass and scale were, from this, that meeting, were that that last building, building five, as it was described in that presentation, was too massive. And we asked you to figure out a way of breaking that up. Also, one of the, in terms of style, the comments were that we would like to see a lot of diversity in the physical look of the buildings. Sort of characteristic in keeping with downtown Main Street, okay? Where no two buildings look exactly alike. There's a lot of diversity and that helps pull down the look of excessive mass and scale. So we ask you to consider that in your future presentations. Put more diversity into the look of buildings. Anybody add anything to that? Okay, then you would like to present your new plans?
Yeah, well, thanks for hearing us again. I'm Chris DiMarzo, I'm the owner of the project. I have with me CJS Architects Dirk Schneider, Craig Jensen. We have our attorney, Chris Nadler, and my son is in the back. Anthony DiMarzo, he was three years old when he started this project. And he's a senior at Metro School now. So we hope we can break around before he graduates.
Well, maybe we're making some progress.
I think we are, I think, I think, I think last meeting, I think we started to communicate. That's so funny, Maria.
Maria's been with us from the beginning.
Yes.
So can I ask, so is he here as a segment of-
He's here because he's been watching and he's interested.
Okay, no, that's cool.
He finally understands what's going on. He wants to hear, you know, your comments and your thoughts. And he's, you know, been listening to me every, every night when I come home for the last X amount of years.
Welcome.
He finally understands it.
Yeah, welcome. I brought my wife last, last session because she had the same feeling.
Cool, he understands exactly what's going on. Oh, he's ready. He's making his application. I wrote down an agenda that's just what you just repeated, but just to keep us on track from where we were and where we're going. Jeff, great to see you, appreciate your time with this. And I'll give it to my architects. And maybe Craig can just kind of maybe at least bring Jeff really quickly up to speed on, on the concept and then go into the changes that we made.
Sure, okay. So you probably understand the concept that you're seeing here. But the idea was, you know, how do we create appropriate scale? But also make reliable targets. Right, how do we, you know, move as much of the parking from the site by putting it, you know, on the buildings? How do we kind of meet the requirements of the letter that was issued? At least in the spirit of that letter, you know? I think, you know, in some cases, like the overall volume of the building, we were able to achieve that. You know, and this is a reference to the letter that was issued. You know what I'm talking about?
The joint, the joint letter from-
There you go, joint letter. So, so some things like the overall volume we need to achieve, other things like the size of the individual buildings. We were looking for, we had to get an interpretation. Let's make the perceived size of the buildings comply, even if the physical size, once by building code standards doesn't comply. So we're trying to create a design that breaks it down into a smaller scale, creates these individual moments and kind of this series of events, you know, along the path of the canal that are perceived as individual buildings, perform for Chris like a larger building. So we can have continuous parking, things like that. It also gets cars off the site and, you know, out of view. Exactly, so it's a, it's a good thing from that perspective. And we stepped the building down toward the canal, so the perceived scale that on the canal side is even lower than on the back side. So there's a lot of two-story pieces on the front, whereas there's three-story pieces on the back. And that gives us a lot more texture and kind of interest, along with mixing up materials to give it just a real evolutionary kind of quality, right? That it doesn't obviously all look like it just happened one day, you know? And I think, you know, we did hear from the board this far that some of the comments were, okay, great, but can you do that and really pull it off? Or is it gonna look like, look like Disneyland? You know, if you do that, if you mix up these materials and you try and look like it was built over time, will it really look that way or is it gonna look like you're trying too hard? You know what I'm saying? Like it's almost fake. And then another comment was, can you figure out how to do this kind of a canal side vernacular in a way that speaks to the village of Pittsburgh as opposed to just anywhere USA? Because it's not like industrial vernacular is not done elsewhere in Montana or wherever it else is done. So how do we get industrial vernacular that's kind of part of the canal heritage as opposed to more generic, right? So we're trying to figure out that and part of our meeting tonight is to show you that we can kind of go in those directions. There were some, well, I guess we're getting better than going, right? So just a general drift of it, I think, if that helps.
Yeah. And I, yeah, let me add one thing.
Yeah.
And style is usually separated from mass and scale. However, we all realize that style can impact the look of mass and scale in a positive way if it's done right. So I repeat what I said a little while ago. If you look at Main Street, Main Street is 1.2 million cubic feet of buildings right in there. You are now, I hope, still at 1.8 million, which would satisfy us.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. But what you were missing, we was picking up some of the style of Main Street and the village houses, the, the commercial as well as residential that have a lot of diversity in their look. So I just want to emphasize.
Well, I'm honest there, and I think, you know, we want to create diversity here. So it creates more of a neighborhood as opposed to just a series of three buildings. So it's more of a community. But we also realized that we can't probably replicate some of the historic details that are on village houses that are 150 years old. So we've got to find a way to kind of simplify some of those details. And that's in part why we're going to rely more on the canal side vernacular, because it is a little less ornamented. But how do we have this kind of more contemporary interpretation of the materials and details and diversity that you've got in the world, right? Both on Main Street and, like you said, in, in the neighborhoods. So that's, I mean, we've been taking, I would say, relatively small steps, because even, you know, our last meeting, it's like, okay, if we can get consensus on this much, then great, and we'll take the next step. And here we're trying to take a step tonight that will stay over a little bit further. And I think once we get over a certain threshold, then I think, you know, Chris is willing to say, okay, now let's, you know, invest the time it's gonna take to bring this to become a real project. But there's no point in developing the entire project and finding out that we're totally off. Right, so, you know, in that regard, I apologize for, we can't show you everything tonight, so it's not there. But hopefully with input, we'll make the right steps instead of the wrong steps.
And we're trying for this to be kind of a team effort. We'd like to listen to you and hear because it's something that is dear to everyone's heart, otherwise you wouldn't have been talking about this for 12 years. I mean, it is critical. So, and in regards, I just wonder what Craig said in regards to replicating. We don't want to replicate to diminish what's the original architecture and detailing in the building. We'd like to pick up certain detailing to really hone in on certain nuances, but not really replicating a friend of a building, which I think that would then go through Disneyland. So I think it's really leaning on the history, but not replicating it. Because we think for that site, it would, like I said, it would diminish the village itself, the way it has grown. So with this, the first part is really like to walk you through the, we have a 3D visual of building three that was kind of in question last time.
Before you do, can you just explain to Bill who's on the same page with the building numbers and how they work?
Yeah, you have to change the building number.
Yeah.
We're a little, again, a little confusing.
Yeah. This is now three. But, but yes, so, so this is really, this numbering is now per building code. So the building code is really looking at this because our parking is connected. One building, two building, and the third building. But visually, we're, we're planning on having this building one to appear almost like nine or 10 buildings, just with a material change in the elevations that we presented last time. With opportunity of going from brick to siding, to different siding exposure, to colors, to board and batten. So this is-
Calling this building one, building two, building three is a little deceptive, because it's a series of buildings.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Correct, yeah, so that's what-
Yes.
It's perceived as, like Chris says, nine or 10 buildings. There's breaks between these buildings, so they're separated into groups of three or four. But by building code, they will be actually permanent, single building, because the parking is continuous. Unless the park was built as a podium, which this does not require. And then you get into actually individual buildings on top of a podium, but that's a whole other story.
And I mean, maybe from this point forward, because we look at it, we look at it every day. Maybe we say, building one, that it's a per building code, it's one building. And, but we could say that it may be, the appearance is nine to 10 buildings, just so.
We understand the point now. We're all talking about the same-
And we could call this, you know, for the purposes of these types of presentations, group one, group two, and group three.
That's better.
Because then we're not even dealing with buildings. It's not a building, no definition, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's easy enough to change.
It just avoids the confusion of, are we talking about building two or nothing? Because they don't reference groups.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's good.
So now let's talk about-
Group three.
Group three.
Okay, group three was, well, building three group was where we had an issue with the mass and scale of that-
Right.
Previous.
Correct.
And we, it was 268 feet long with no brakes in it. And we felt that it needed to be broken up.
Yes. So, so now here, so we included now this three-dimensional view. And the biggest break is really happening, so in the state on elevation that wasn't here, there was really, was a lot of maybe the same siding here that really made it look long and not like all the other buildings broken down a little bit more. So we really took this two-story piece and set this also back in, in addition to all these other setbacks that we already had before. And we really, on the canal side, this additional five-foot setback wouldn't really change the units inside much, but it will give this swath that we had before of more monolithic facade, another nice deep shadow to really break it up, instead of, now the elevators and stairs still can operate under one building. So this is our proposal to really change the elevation. And here is actually, that just came earlier. So the break is 30 feet wide in the middle, in here. And it's really now groups is into 51, 24, 30 foot, 24 foot, 39 foot. So again, in these small segments, and if we, the way we're treating it, it could be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven individual, different sightings and setback areas. So even back in here, right, so this would be one option. Here would be one. So it really can be broken up and not look so long anymore.
So by broken up, you're saying there could be a physical separation between those?
No, by broken up, they're, they're all together, broken up, meaning there's a-
Okay, all right, I just want to be clear.
Yeah. Broken up is, as you can see in some other buildings, where there's 20 feet that is broken up.
Let me add to what Dirk is saying. And if you really look at the site plan again, this third building or third group of buildings, we need to understand that it's the hardest point from Mono Avenue, is nearly a quarter mile from the bridge. That's how far it is. And this site plan is really good, because you can even see that the beginning of the building is really laterally farther than the football field in, in towards, you know, an area where there is unseeable, other than if you're on the football field. So we need to remember where this building is when we're talking about it.
Well, let me make a point about that.
Yeah.
Remember, the public way is, is the walkway down and the canal, down the canal. So that building is very visible from a public way.
Right, but by how many people? I mean, the majority of the people going across the bridge is where you're gonna get the most volume of people in this view here. It's really difficult to see by many people unless you're on your bike. And really, the canal path goes over here, not over here. So maybe you have a couple of state workers that can see it clearly.
Or anybody going up the canal.
Or anybody going up the canal.
Or anybody up at the football stadium, at school.
The, the point is, it's not the primary focus that the majority of people coming into the village are gonna see.
I, I would agree with it.
Okay.
But it's not excluded from public.
Every building can be seen at, at some point.
But, but I think we're still giving this group three, formerly known as building three, the same treatment as we do with the buildings, kind of up and down the development. So I, I could see this, right? If we on sudden would turn this to just a flat facade and no stepping and saying, hey, we don't care, that's the last building. We just pump it up and it's all prefab and we put it there because we don't care anymore. We still care about this a lot and I, and we're really continuing the same idea about the stepping and the roof terraces. And so our, our change was really in here. Because we also felt, as looking into getting a separation in here, as you suggested, the buildings all moved closer to Mono Avenue, which we didn't think was a beneficial loss in our mind or gain by having a little gap in here, by moving the buildings actually closer to Mono Avenue. We thought right now the buffer to Mono Avenue is a nice respectful buffer. The buildings start appropriately when you cross the bridge, you see it. So we really felt the additional 20 feet moving closer to Mono Avenue in our mind, as we looked at it. This was a more appropriate move to create change in material and visually breaking it up without physically breaking it up.
And as you move, you know, kind of along these series of buildings, you know, kind of seeing them obliquely, you won't really see those slots, you know what I'm saying? You'll look right in front of the gap, in order to see the gap. So as you move down the canal, you won't necessarily know if there's a gap there or not a gap there, until you get right there and you can look through, you know what I'm saying? So if it's far end, you might think there's a gap, just because there's an offset, but you-
I think there's a gap.
You will, that's not, you'll think there's a gap. And you'll get there like, oh, there's no gap there. But you wouldn't necessarily perceive that from a distance, right? So, and also about this last building, you know, we've broken this thing up in as many pieces as we could, or we talk about graphical. But at some point, even a larger building is more diversity. So we were kind of like, well, this is just creating one more, you know, variation in the overall theme of things. If it was the same size as another piece, it would be less variation in a way. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, that it's, it's a bigger building. But if you're gonna do it someplace, this is the place to do it.
To reiterate what you said earlier, Bill, we need to remember that the drawing that we're looking at here really doesn't have exterior materials on it. It's just a block drawing at this point. The whites and the browns are just to say a material break. So it's not gonna be brown, it's not gonna be white. Maybe, maybe there will be some of those colors, but don't get lost in the fact that half of it's brown, half of it's white. It's just to show material. And I did bring some materials, we can get into that later if you want.
Accidentally, we did a black and white print, and I think that's maybe almost less confusing. It's just gray, and it's not pretending to be one thing or the other. It's, it's just grayscale right now, what we see in and out of it.
You can bring more to it.
But to reiterate what you said, when the materials really get put on there, then you're really gonna see more variation.
So I have a question. So I'm, I'm curious and I'm wondering, what, what is this? Well, how does this go? This piece like?
These are kind of covered outdoor spaces. Again, to give, to give yourself, instead of just having balconies like in some other areas, these are covered walk-ups, so here you can actually walk up to your, to your patio on this level.
It's essentially like a porch, right?
Yeah, so it's like a porch, so here's a little stair, you can walk up. There's, there's a little porch that you walk in, so it's covered. And it gives people up above actually a balcony to step out and, again, that's just another little texture and overlay. And we don't know yet what these vertical pieces look like. Are those maybe more worked out like a column? Or it's really just creating positive and negative voids and shadows? And I think the next round, if we're overall, I think we're heading in the right direction. These things will then be worked out more. But yeah, it's more like the front porch for, for these people down here. Just like this corner is your front porch with a little railing at the corner. They just don't have a roof on it. There's a balcony or a little bump up above, just to create more texture in the facade.
Quick question on the, on the, how much further? And I'm, I'm not familiar with the entire tract of land, goes beyond, beyond this here.
Yeah, it's maybe 50 feet to the end?
Oh, okay.
And it's really narrow.
Yeah, really. So I noticed this driveway goes behind it, there's nothing in front, so, yeah.
We did that for fire access, fire marshal, not access to at least two sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not, there's not-
The pergolas on the roof are, there's a reason that they are connected to this side or not to the back and-
Well, so this, this pergola that is shown up here is really part of this unit here. And then this unit has kind of an opportunity for the structure. So we will need to separate with planters and other opportunities. Everyone gets a little bit of the roof terrace for the view of the, of the canal. So this was really attached over here. But in other options, actually, in the front here, right, we have a few pergolas that are attached to the other side, that run the other directions. Again, I mean, this is a detailing, if there's some strong feelings, we, we can talk about it. But right now, it was really also visually to kind of close this volume here. If you look at the elevations, that's where I was over there. So under living room opens from here. We think the living room opens from here. Our next step is to sit down with Chris and go over the floor plans and really, so we can lift the cloak of footprint and see what's happening behind some of the stores. And some of these areas also then might change its location. But the big idea of the setbacks, without these little, these details here are shown right now, just so we all see that there is an opportunity for shadows and texture up on the roof.
And these elements, they are, why, so how this came about?
So these are kind of, again, just to create more shadow in the facade, because the building is long and also wide. You have these little three, four-foot little built-in balconies just coming out, gives you some protection, but also gives us a chance to maybe add another material around it. And maybe give it a little more of a modern look and kind of more of a traditional material color.
It is very modern, you're right. It's 1930s kind of concrete world.
Yeah. Well, and, and let's not forget what you're looking at. As you understand, this is a sketch-up model. Are you familiar with sketch-up?
Yes, I do, no, Chris, and I read, no, I understand what you're saying.
So this, this is going to be a balcony with a roof on it. I don't, I don't, not really that happy with this kind of box kind of balcony. So it will be a balcony with some kind of pretty covered roof on it, maybe standing seam roof, or something that ties back in. This is conceptual at this scale.
Okay.
I don't envision a box concrete ad-ice stick on, some kind of modern thing. So that's, that's just inaccurate at this scale. Is that, are we in agreement? Is it, is that what you're saying? You're not, you don't really like the idea of like a concrete?
It's not, it's, it's, the shape reminds me of a period in architecture that is Marcelle Corvise. It's, it's actually designed specifically to prevent light or create some, you know, the sun, because actually was designed in a place in the world which is very hot. So they create these deep balconies just to create shade in this, in apartments inside. And then I thought that was interesting, the choice of volume or shape to bring to the village, because it really, architecturally speaking, is 1930s kind of, I think, so.
I, I don't think we're going in that direction. I think it was in inaccuracy of the level where, I'll speak for them, because I don't like it.
Okay, we won't be doing that.
You feel like kicking you?
Yeah, it's-
This is not gonna be that contemporary. We're not trying to make a point with that. It honestly, and these stairs on the end are inaccurate too. So I think it just got to the point of, you know, we're still trying to get the massing and the blocking and the spacing at this point. We're not into those that level yet. It will definitely be a covered porch.
I'm going to see, so there are things that I value about what you're bringing to a table as you guys shared before. And this is one person, so it's not, I'm not, I do not represent the board, this is my, my take. And when I look at the, at this first one, when I was studying the work, that the ins and outs, the breaks, the spaces in between, I think that this idea that you're inspiring the work on Main Street. And so I took the time to go and walk Main Street, look at the materials and look at the feeling and the human scale. So I thought that that captures some of those elements when that's the building, sadly, there's this little space in between. And then those alleys, so there are tons, you know, not tons, because we have a very small. But there are several alleys that bring kind of that human scale and makes it very interesting, because it's those hidden places that are architect, that are natural architecture, really. Still special about the village. So that is something that I really value of you bringing in and allowing this, because it's massive, like building, as a building is massive. But by breaking it that way, you reduce the mass and scale, which we, I appreciate. So that's one thing I, I value. As I'm bringing those details, I, I am concerned, because even though it's volumetric and it's a sketch-up, and I understand the limitations also of the software that you're using, and we're not getting very detailed, that, that actually becoming something else will be very difficult, in my opinion, even if you just- That, that actually becoming something else will be very difficult, in my opinion, even if you just cover it with a little roof or anything. So that's something that I suggest that it needs to be worked. And you say to the end like it.
Sure.
So that's, that's why I brought it up. Another, another thing that I value and I think is really positive is that the entrances, that you're elevating the entrances, that you walk Main Street. I'm not sure. I'm going to share something that I did. I'm going to share. I went, I went on a walk. So we need to share here. So you don't mind. I didn't make too many copies. So Christine and I can share.
All of this is Main Street, right?
Yes, so, so.
Sure.
Yes, that's it. So. So I just selected, no, because, once again, the idea you have, we have been talking, not F code center, not this. But there are gables, parapets and cornices all over. So I think that that's something that we need to think. But alleys and side streets. So if you go to the second page, can you see, so those separations? And then there are little alleys. And this is a side street, actually, of this big building that actually is a space and their cars are walking in and there is this porch, a chair here, then a little detail. So those are things that I think is valuable when I see those breaks. So those, I'm just going to stop there because it come now. But I just wanted to bring those, those of value.
And we're gonna talk more about that in a minute.
Perfect. So I, there are more things that we probably can refer to later, but I don't know, Christine.
I, I can appreciate the concept that you were saying that the the breaks, the perceptions will be different from the straight on view.
Yeah.
And that the oblique view, I think you're absolutely right, that you won't be able to tell if the setback is actually
Right.
a full on alley.
Which is good, because there's a certain, you know, kind of spontaneity to it when you walk along here that you don't necessarily know what's gonna happen, because there's this diversity and maybe there's a break, maybe there's not, maybe it steps out. It creates interest because it's unexpected. When you hit one of those spaces between the buildings, if you're not playing with it, it's like, oh, that's interesting, you know, but you didn't realize it was coming, because from an oblique view, you, you can't tell. But that's good, you know, I think. And we would want that kind of spontaneity in this design, right? So we don't know what's gonna happen around the corner.
I'm thinking with this third building, uh, at the end, this is, it's, it's basically stays about the same size that it was before, but you've adjusted.
Yeah, it's more of a.
That was just for me, my understanding. And I think that I, I can agree that if with the variety of different setbacks, you might be able to achieve that. I, I don't know that it's quite there yet, because when I still look at it, you still have a a mass at that front, even though there might be some little setbacks, there's nothing that's deep enough to
Understood.
give you that idea that there, you know, these might be separate buildings, or they might not be. Although I can, I can see that that's certainly possible with the, you know, transformation, but.
But because of limitations on the side, like Dirk said, we're trying to avoid closing Monroe, we're trying to add another elevator, we're trying to kind of make things fit. It would have sort of been easier just to split these buildings, but there, we thought there are reasons, you know, to try and do it in another way, you know, with devices that allude to the idea of several buildings don't actually physically separate them, which might have been more like you guys said.
Well, certainly, that was the initial thought. I think this is doable as well. But maybe, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to get into like, detain exactly what you do, but I'm thinking that if you, if you did want it to look like it, it might have more than one building back there, at least some portion of that front. Like, you know, there, there is no point on that facade that might look like there's any separation, because there is a full mass.
Continuous space.
Yes. I mean, on the second level, there was.
Yeah, the first one back from which created a gap, you know, completely again, if you didn't even see one of those buildings, that might be good, you know, who was pushed way in.
And I'm, I'm also wondering, and I'm not sure, because that's a conversation to have. So for example, this volume, this of the column. So there is a page, and I, I went and I was looking at how to we enter, you know.
That's fine, I can see.
No, but yeah, so it's on page, uh, wait, no, I should have related numbers. It's called elevated entrances. It's like the third page.
Yeah.
So you see, another thing of, it's a series of events. So I'm wondering if within this, this, not trying to imitate what exactly is here, there are front entrances, there are side entrances, and somehow you're trying to accomplish that, but
Yes.
they, they are becoming too solid or too.
Yes.
So maybe there is something to say that we're entering an apartment building. Yes, probably we should be safe, having that, yeah. The building should say this is, but at the same time, probably we need to bring some of that scale of Main Street is one, you know, same different entrances, the side, the front, the, I don't know. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, we had some of those elements in previous. So there has to be maybe a between too much and too little.
Would, would you also include not just different entrances, but maybe different windows and different window treatment?
And that is, I will talk about the next slide.
Yeah, that's new. And I think, you know, because we have accessible entrances on the railroad side, we can do this type of thing on the canal side, where we can create a, a series of, you know, steps up to porches or secondary entrances to these units, because all these units will have an accessible entrance from the backside, because there's a connecting corridor, right? But these types of opportunities, whether it's kind of developed as a, a small stoop or almost like a old loading dock, you know, how loading docks kind of just like, all these kinds of things. I think we're certainly looking to do this on, on the canal side.
Another question is, so if I'm walking in front of the building, you know, because working in Main Street, so we were going to, I'm going back, if the inspiration is Main Street as a block. So when, when you walk, it's a sidewalk. So the sidewalk, so the ins and outs of the sidewalk, so somebody has come in, they step back, there's an entrance on the side, it's higher, a lot higher, lower. So I'm, I'm wondering if how is that, is that something happening? Because I see, you know, I don't know, like, is there a sidewalk or? Or how does it work?
Yeah, so our next step is to start get the site civil engineering involved again. It's not the massing. If we have the length of the buildings, now we can put it in the site and start working the topography, and then we will know. We have two steps, six steps, because our, our entry door itself will not change at these series of events, because we have, we, we have one, but with a great, we can have a stair now that maybe has eight steps. And maybe then one that has only six and change the railings and do, do other details like that to make it look like it's different. By the time of day, the building that is more economical behind it, because of Main Street, where's it, that Seaver shine with a huge set of stairs that goes out, that you probably wouldn't even build anymore, because it's so steep. And then you have some steps down. So we would make the, the change in travel and the amount of steps you really start playing with the brakes to, to get that similar look.
And we still have to figure out, as, as Dirk was saying, once we get the civil engineer back engaged, you know, where is the sidewalk relative to these activities? You know what I'm saying? Is it really tight to these porches? Or is there a little space there? You know, how much green space is between the sidewalk and the, the face of the building, right?
Which, you know, sorry to interrupt, so on elevated entrances. You know, the last picture? If you look, that's a house in Main Street. So you see what the, the diversity in Main Street, because that's a house. So there's like a piece of little grass, you know, grass in the front, and there is, and there is the entrance, which is different from other parts of Main Street, which are just most of the commercial ones that allow more like density, let's say, or stuff like.
And then I think we'll have a variety of maybe a setback like this, or then some other side streets, where there's the porch, it's maybe a six foot strip of grass, the sidewalk, another four.
That will be fantastic.
Um, so I think those will be the varieties that now if we're working the street through, um, we can get those varieties going with maybe some parallel parking to reduce certain setbacks. So, I mean, that is really our hope, that we can get some of those varieties visually, that it's also not just this one street that should improve, that we can start playing.
And you're, you're totally right that this, you know, interface between the sidewalk and the building entrances is super important, because as much as the facade of these buildings is important, what you do to access the building, how you relate or how you activate that, you know, all this kind of potential energy that will exist at these entry points. Yeah, they have to have, there has to be a lot of things going on, and they all have to play nicely together, right?
And they, and they help define the buildings.
Exactly, right. Totally correct.
There's such as an arbitrary change in materials to make you happy. It's actually a change in material that also has an entry point that's like, oh, this is actually a different.
Yeah, different building, yeah.
Yes.
And some of these maybe self-contained little porches that don't even have a stoop, you know, maybe they're just a place for someone to come out on a porch. And there's, there's examples of houses that you see that the entrance is on the side, the porch is actually, yeah, self-contained, right? There might be something like that too. But again, it'll just add to the complexity and level of interest.
Yeah, again, if every, every element would have a stoop that comes out, then it's monotonous.
Right, right.
That's not what we're trying to do.
So we, we understand what you're trying to show us here. We will incorporate these ideas. We agree.
It's, it's, yeah. So another thing I want to say of the board, so I have been thinking, ladies. So in terms of math and scale, it just comes to a point in which, don't get this into everybody. It's, this is, this is massive. You know what, as, as it is, we, we, we shrunk to a level that, that as a board, you know, we have to live, I, I don't really say, it's the cubic feet or whatever has, is this kind of bigger.
Well, to, to that point, I would say.
So. If no one was going to continue this, you know what?
Main Street is massive, right? Twelve, one point two million cubic feet. But the, the visual effect of Main Street is not massive.
So.
And so that's what we're tracing, chasing here. And conceptually, I think you've given us some great ideas to get started. Daryl is in the details of when you, when you execute these things.
And I think that when we think about these blocks, Ben, I'm wondering if there are scenes of the La Manzana, the, oh gosh, I forgot the name in English. It's, you know, when you have a set of houses, it's a block. That's the word, a block, yeah. So there are scenes of blocks, see? And then Main Street is still, this is the facade, this is the facade of Main Street, but they are blocked. So these alleys are kind of, these, these, these windows or, or entries or alleys towards kind of the, see the side of the block, which we don't see. So, so that.
I'll show you some more of that too in a second.
Okay.
I, I want to add something here too, as I'm looking at this overhead here. It also seems that there's, in many cases, there's equal spacing in front of and behind each unit. And that's another opportunity to change that scale to really emphasize, maybe they should be, maybe there's a sidewalk that really.
There definitely is.
Yeah. Or maybe the private spaces in the rear, maybe it's a little, that could vary. But I think it's another opportunity to add that variety.
When we get into more detail in the site, then we'll see those street skate areas.
And, and we haven't redone the rendering yet, but I mean, here it's really, I mean, there will, we are thinking of having sidewalks right in front and.
Yeah.
But, but again, so once we have the site civil engineer, they will start putting some of these details on, because right now these roads, we traced the old site civil plans and then just made it fit our, our layout and that. So.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's keep, are we, any other questions on building three? I think we need, we're gonna continue to refine it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so can we switch gears to talk about the additions of the gables and soul groups?
Right.
So this is what we presented last time, like this rendering with the shed roof, and then we heard the comments about how can we make this feel more like Pittsburgh? And Chris admitted that one of the drawings that we submitted that she had a gable. And so we, so we pulled that drawing out again. And we didn't have this little light monitor up in there that you showed that, that you see in here. But I think there's an opportunity now, looking at the, this very iconic building that's a shown place, that I think lots of pictures are being taken in front of, bringing this kind of the typology.
Both there, by the way.
Gary got a senior picture taken. He went to Nazareth.
It's cool.
So, so with this outline, we really thought this would bring kind of more Pittsburgh. They would bring a detail, a typology back if someone is walking the path all the way from a certain place over here. There's something visually that kind of ties it into being more Pittsburgh. And then with a material here, important button material, um, or maybe it is a metal siding to be more like this, but we wouldn't start rusty, right? There wasn't rusty as they built it. Um, and then we would have a, something that would look like an addition that grown over time with more shiplab siding, um, here onto the side. So now when you come in, actually, instead of seeing this maybe more of a shed roof, that is maybe a little more nondescript, we think this really would tie visually into maybe more of a canal vernacular.
So you wouldn't do that across the board, you know, that selectively?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, probably only on the three story portions that are on the rear, because two story portions generally want to be used for roof terraces. So these three story portions should form the kind of backdrop. Not all, it's just, you know, selectively, like you say, would be the opportunity to do that.
So here's a little, again, that accidental black and white one, and I can circulate this. But here it shows you, so we would have this, the, this roof here and the roof on this end. And then there's a stair tower that we'll need to get up onto the roof for roof access. There would be kind of more vertical element that you can also see along the canals. And then here it's more of a butterfly roof. And so I think really I'm starting to work on the variety, and I can circulate this. So everyone can see. So it wouldn't just be a detail that now becomes monotonous again. So it's really a detail that is in a few locations. And therefore makes it more special instead of just again, having something and doing it five hundred times.
So the question, architecturally speaking, there are two things. So then you have Main Street, Main Street, the, the, you know, the buildings have different materials and. And then you have the industrial part, which is shemplings.
Yes.
So how, so here, I think the challenge is how is, is Main Street is completely different. Main Streets in little villages around the canal
Yeah.
are just, you know, they're the pristine, that they're supposed to be these folk houses that were just transformed, or, you know, and they, they have this, this Romanist building or whatever, Richard Stone, you know, like we have here, like hello. And they are the, so how are you going to, I think, are we going to marry that or, or is you, you know?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
That was a good question.
Because they're like, you have a completely, you talk, you talk about, what did you call it, the vernacular, they?
Restored canal.
Yeah, the canal side.
Yeah, I don't, that versus the other one. So you have two completely different stats going on here. So how are you guys marrying or?
Yeah. So, so I think with the material palette that we presented last time, and I think that's also at the end of this presentation, I think we're thinking more of the vernacular and materials of industrial canal. But we think the massing, because it is, it is a long site. We think the massing is very successful at the village. So we would say we're replicating what's at shown place. I mean, those are some big, long buildings too, and but there are a few small events. And here, it's a long site, so we're really thinking what we see on Main Street, just how the buildings grew over time and kind of grew together to become what we know now. We think it's successful in massing, but material wise, I think also knowing what's across on the other side of the canal, really think that more of an industrial palette. And, and therefore also picking some industrial typologies from shown place would be appropriate for that site.
So there's nothing wrong with picking some elements from this Main Street, picking some elements from John's place. Try to make those mesh as, as long as you don't get. Try to make those mesh as, as long as you don't get carried away with. With all those elements of Sharon Place.
Yeah.
That's right. And I think as long as there are typologies, right, you squint your eyes and it's kind of looks like, like, oh, I think I'm here. And when you open your eyes and it's just an interpretation of what was there, because again, like I said earlier. I would hate to replicate what's here and diminish what was here before. So I think that's kind of our next level of really detailing and going in. And that's why. What we will see in other pages, the photo survey of close-ups of what's right now on Main Street and with a siding and window heights and sill heights. And height highs, how.
Cause I think that ties in.
So here on this next rendering, we have some close-ups of what we saw, just how the materials kind of come together. And actually, there's quite a few actually painted brick buildings, more, more brick than we all thought. When you drive by, it doesn't look like.
Doesn't look like.
There's so much brick and we said, well, first of all, it's just brown. It's not really good, but. There was actually quite a few brick and then actually there are buildings that have platform on them now. If you look at the closer, it's actually a brick behind it too. So someone finally thought, well, let's change the texture a little bit. This looks too monochromatic for us. But then you can see here, right, the different, the window proportions and, and the doors and I think there's just. So here we, if we bring the window sill down and maybe closer just to the 18 inches. We could have some double huns over here with maybe a two over two panel. These could become more casements. Here the siding is a four and a half inch exposure versus a six inch. We haven't gotten into, maybe put on one block, put a window casing around it. So. It looks a little more, so I think there's now, this level of detail is really, I think, what will become important then, not just have. One railing detail that Chris in order to truckloads full of, I think, the railing details will be. A little bit, kind of changed a little bit also that not, you have the same detail throughout the whole thing. So. I think this is what we're exploring right now. What's in here with this photo survey? And, and then this, and here is one of those events, kind of looking down, one of those alleys where the parking is actually underneath continues. These apartments, like terraces that come out and it's separated with a big planter or a little, or a little wall.
So this would have one parking lot underneath and between the two buildings?
Yeah. So the parking is continuous and that's where we have that big cut in it and it's far enough apart. Where we can now even have balconies and here's some other roof shapes coming in just also looking at the skyline. It's not.
So how many, how many parking spots for, you know, units, which you, are you thinking about?
Underneath, yeah, underneath.
It's not one for one covered parking. There's enough parking for the entire development, but underneath there's probably. Seventy percent.
Yeah.
It takes the pressure off the outside.
Yeah, yeah. And then we can make it on the railroad side for the most part.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So one of the segments first, we had actually on this side, another apartment and only had parking at half of it. But then as we did the count, like now I have the site was covered or almost all side, the whole side was covered.
See, there's a service, their point they made last time, this is a very valid point. Is this is an upscale apartment complex. They're gonna be looking for premium pricing. And you can't, you can't have. Two-story buildings that have no parking underneath, that have no elevator up to those. So, yeah. So we, we have some sympathy for that. And what, what we're trying to do here is, is make sure that we. We have a design that, that minimizes the, that massive. And allows them to get to.
What you talked about related to that was some of the work that you're used to doing, Henrietta.
Right.
And there's smaller buildings there, but they're all walk-ups. And so there's no elevators and it's a different demographic and especially for the park below. You know, who I think in this market are going to expect an elevator to take them from their parking to their second or third floor apartment. And the walk-up thing that is more, is only really possible with smaller buildings, this isn't going to work here. So we had to get this. Push some of these buildings together and that's part of the reason we've got, we've got showing them as separate, but still grouping them together.
So you just pointed out on site plan, so this here is, is the view that you're seeing in here. So this is the step through. Where you come from the railroad side, you can walk through here as pedestrian and go down the stairs. To the road and sidewalk and go down to the canal. So that would be kind of one of those events that you're seeing right here and it would kind of be similar, but different over here. And yet again, here and here.
Yeah, that's nice.
So Jeff, just to. I don't, you, you weren't here last week for this drawing. This is the parking underneath this building.
Oh, okay.
So really I just added it up. There's actually more than one spot per unit.
Okay.
Underneath.
Yeah.
And then the rest is outside, but you know, typical two-bedroom unit, you probably want two spots or something like that.
So, um. So I'm wondering if these pictures are kind of the, the inspirational element that you guide the conversation.
Yes.
Suggestions.
Yes.
We have them in Main Street spaces that behave a little bit like that.
Yes.
Example, breathe yoga. I am a, when you go to breathe, you never enter breathe through the front door. Because you enter, you park and then you enter breathe. And that little alley. It's a little bit, not, not this side, but it could be a feeling, that feeling of the side entrance. This behind the scenes things on the back alley, you know?
Yep.
So I should just take this picture instead of this inspiration?
This is, yeah, this monument. And I understand what you're trying to do, you know, because, but this is monumental, but I think. That we have it there.
Yes.
And there are spaces that in between blocks, there's an event. There's, if you, you also behave a little plaza. They have even breathe as a porch, like little colonnades, right? There's a little column at the entrance. On the back, there is another thing happening, you know, and there is the park itself.
Yeah.
So I think these areas can be also opportunities to enter this space to walk by.
No, we agree. And always each one is different, right? So you don't want to hit the next one and find the same thing you saw last time, but they're just very.
Yeah, so here, for example, Alice's side streets. See, so this is a very large space and actually now, you know, instead of cars, you know, we have the pedestrians. I think that's page number two.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a big space in Main Street and you can look at once again, in between three. Those are fun spaces. You know, doing this parking, I remember when the restaurant that's gone, that was on a fun restaurant. Keep coming apart. Remember that you sometimes you and you park and you walk behind and that was, it was fun.
Yeah.
So anyway.
So we're, we're trying to get those spaces, the inspiration pictures don't really match up, but we're getting there.
I think it's, in terms of form, I understand they can't, yeah, but in terms of scale, I think that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they force.
Okay. And I, I understand and appreciate that the drawing is, is, all of the drawings are really focusing on the massing. I'm thinking in the, in the next step, seeing how those individual entrances punctuate. These elevations is going to help, help us to. Tie it together.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm assuming you left them off of here because we are still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, here we started, but again, this is just a pattern in the software. We started thinking about. How you walk here on the side, you can go on this porch that Ethan said. And this one is right now mirrored, but we also sketch, you just come straight on this one. So it's not just like a mirror image. So that, so a lot of stuff is going on, but again, with the grading. I think we just want to understand from you that, okay, we keep hitting, we keep going in the right direction then. And I think then we can dive into more detail and do this whole site. Do it what it deserves and I think what everyone is looking for here. While making it still feasible to develop. So I think overall, I feel like we're hitting a, a good median. So we can move forward.
Any other comments that anybody wants to make? Okay, so I think. We're, we're in the same book, on the same page. We're getting there. Your, your concepts of how to break up. Visual mass and scale are good comments. I mean, I, good ideas. The goes and the details. We need to see the, the details of how you'd execute that further. Particularly in terms of style. And though we're not looking to copy Main Street and we're not looking to cup and pick up all the elements of, say, in place.
Yeah.
There are some elements in both of those that can help. Reinforce the diversity look of this.
And that's how to reinforce the location.
Yes.
And, and I think to the point that was made earlier, how we find kind of our own voice, you know, because. These Main Street and Shaw Place and the residential districts in the village are all very different, right? So how do we, we can't just mash it all off, you know what I'm saying? We've got to find our own voice that can. Still feel like it's part of this conversation, but it's not necessarily a collage of these things because they don't necessarily all fit together perfectly. So that.
But I think what they have in common is diversity of look.
Yeah.
Now.
But it's, it's interesting because sometimes of the materials are also the solution to the scale of the building. So we have the chicken coop there, like you know, the, the metal ones. So that for industrial purposes and.
That's what, we need a chicken coop in here.
Yeah. So that's, that's why they have this material and the proportion. And I think the flour mill is another representation of the use of a different material. Which, so that, you know. Then you start a conversation with different materials and, and then the bike shop now. What I'm talking about. So now that's another scale of the parapet coming.
Yeah.
But there is a theme that goes around that could be, I, I think that you're trying to use as inspiration to solve the volume. Or the, the, you know, to solve the facade. And I think that, that they are important. That, you know, that, you know, that those elements maybe could be a good part of the conversation of where you get inspiration from them. Another thing that I noticed of, of the entrances that you're proposing is, you know, you enter on the side. And this is the skills, this is the tour and the other one is two entrances on the side, which is very typical of Main Street.
Yeah.
You know, that's for one entrance to one, one little place, but in scale, I guess those, I see some of those elements appearing. They feel too massive still, I think.
And I think it's also. I also think the texture and pattern of this. What the, the CMU blocks, it doesn't help. It makes it feel very industrial. So I think also this would become a different texture or just. Kind of a plaster finish or inciting, which has brought it to a different, different scale.
So do you guys feel like you have enough information here to?
Move forward.
Let's, so this is what I'm hearing, something went wrong. What I'm hearing from the group is that. The overall development in terms of mass and scale and volume. We're at that criteria and that we can move forward at that point. But 1.8 million cubic feet, it, it kind of is what it is. Now we need to take this, hearing what you're saying, these details of the entrances. And the details of the spaces and the push and pull, everything that you've said that I wrote down. Needs to be refined and, and, and made more accurate and more detailed. And we're not, we're not there yet. I'm going to instruct them to take it to the next level. I'd like to hear from you, what? In terms of drawings, you're going to want to see. To give us an approval. Tell me what you're going to want.
Well, first of all, we're going to need. The detail and the kind of things that we talked about that are both style and mass and scale. But we're, but we're going to need that detail. If you're gonna, if you're gonna put in. One of these elements, we need to see that, that we talked about. Okay. What else would you like to see in the final plans that we get? Beyond more detail.
I have to admit that in the many years that have been in this sport, we have not done a project of this size. So the majority of things that came across this table. We would have details like down to the quarter of an inch on railings and so. I, I'm not totally sure, you know, how, if we do get to that level or how we get to that level because it's. Frankly, quite, quite a lot of work.
Yeah, and, and let's remember what we're here for. We're, we're here for a certificate of appropriateness. So we're not here for a railing approval. And those details will start to refine, but it's a different criteria that you're looking at.
I'm, okay, so I'm, I'm probably not even clear what this approval is. Maybe Jeff, you can instruct, like, are there two separate points of approval or? Like what we've done.
You're ultimately going to want a certificate of approval for this work. That's what they need to go forward with. And generally when we look towards a certificate of approval. And I haven't read the old code, we would put your out. You know, we, we work with four-dimensional elevations. So.
Well, and more than that, we, we, we look for very finite detail of all the elements like railings.
Fully rendered elevation.
Right.
Totally dimensioned.
So I mean, something like this, just with more detail and.
Obviously bigger stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, overall, and then zooming in on some general details and maybe a few 3D views that are more. Because once we start putting this actually in different software, it can become quickly and easily actually.
Yeah.
We can apply certain materials, finishes and shadows that are almost instant. So, I mean, there are other ways. If we go further and reinvest the time, where we can actually show you things.
I'm sorry, I'm wondering.
So the way I look at it is. If they approve. Something. That when it comes time to go look at that something. The, the code enforcement, building office can look at the plans and say, yep.
Yeah.
Your bill was approved.
Yeah.
And whatever that level of detail necessary is, I'm looking at this. Yeah, I see that, I see that, I see that, you know, depth. So whatever that level is. That's, I think, the level you're going to need to approve.
And we've had, you know, we would want to know typically we want the sill heights. And header heights and, you know, dimensions of windows plus all the materials and the, the window manufacturer. I, I guess I, I might want to take a look at, I wasn't on the board when they did the mill. But that might be an indicator, at least to me, like, you know, so we've done new construction. But mainly in the form of additions.
But don't we have a step that we need to go through before we get to that?
And that is. Are there two?
If I can interrupt, Chris Mander from, from part four. Your code, the code applicable here says the standard of review for new construction. Which is different than the standard of review for replacement or remodel of those houses and those. But your standard of review for new construction is that it shall be consistent. With the architectural styles of historic value in the applicable district. It goes on and says that. Applying the principles of consistency and compatibility. The HPH shall consider following factors, composition, design, factory, other visual factors. I think I'm, I think you hit the nail on the head that with new construction, you're not measuring. The, you know, the garb rail dimensions, you're commenting on style, compatibility with style.
If you look at that, you will see what a complete application must contain. There's a section of that.
We understand.
And that, and that is more detailed than what that.
Okay.
And that, and that, that, that additional detail is much as I described.
But, but. Isn't there a step that we need to go through before we get to that detail?
I suggest that, you know, I'm thinking out loud right now, but I don't think that we're ready to have this, them jumping to do that. I think that there has to be.
Right.
Another, you know, and, and I, you need to sketch because right now, I think that while we, while we came to an agreement on this meeting, is somehow that the way they're presenting these volumes and the massing is something to move forward with. That's it. I don't think that there's anything else that, that we have agreed on, but ideas on, you know.
It's a conceptual.
A conceptual, exactly, because.
About a conceptual agreement, right?
Yeah, because what is next is extremely sophisticated for them to do.
So what, maybe I misunderstood. I'm, I was assuming that you were asking the question, what do we need for a C of A?
I think that's what Chris was asking.
Right. And not.
What's the next step?
What's the next? They go together. Again, what, what I, what I, my understanding of what we need for a C of A is written in the code. And it says elevations of all sides of all buildings to a certain scale and that stuff. We're, we're going to get there. What I think the next step is, is to maybe take one building, not all three, and start to get into more detail at a bigger scale. And have you guys see that? When we get on the same page there, then I'll say go and they'll do the whole.
Spread it over the others.
Exactly, because, yeah, that's a lot of work.
Or a section.
We're, we're not ready to go to the, the detail for a C of A.
I'm not asking for approval yet. I'm going to get there though.
I understand.
And I'm going to get there soon.
We want to, want to say if this is okay with us.
Right.
We need to make that determination because that will allow them to move. It's like, this is too massive or no, separated, divided or whatever. We need to.
And we like this little element that you pulled out and this and all of this.
I'm not understanding.
So.
What, what I said a second ago, are we on the same page with that, that I get into detail in, in a section of a?
Right.
Have, have we agreed that this, this, this layout is okay? So that, do you know that we said, because I have not, I don't know, have we said yes to this layer? Because I think we need to start.
Yeah, I think she's right.
What do you say? What, what do you, what, I think the only comment that I had about it was that if, if we're looking at that building three to have the same nuances as the rest of the site, that there's.
You can't have.
There should be at least some type of a slice in the.
In this building three.
The soft and solidity of the first story of it. Yeah.
Yes.
That was my only, only comment.
Wait a minute, can, can, can it also be a perceptual slice?
Oh, yeah.
Rather than a.
No, no, I'm not talking about dividing. And I, I, I think we understand.
We absolutely understand.
Because I don't want you guys to go, oh, we never said yes.
Building three, we understand the concept there. We will, we will do that. But what, what, are you talking about the site plan and how there's three buildings and you're not happy with that yet?
No, no, I'm not saying. What I want to be sure is that you guys leave here with clarity from this board in which we are happy with this.
With what? Happy with what?
With this layout.
The site plan layout.
I'm leaving here today saying that the overall size of this project, we're on the same page with, and it's not going to get any bigger. And we're going to keep it the same size.
Exactly, because it's for you, for you.
For me. So now, okay, I have confidence in that. That the HPB has finally said mass and scale is okay in terms of the massing. Now it really comes down to the details, which can make it visually look smaller and more detailed. And it's got to tie into the, the precedence that we're shooting at.
So, so the question on the table is, is this site plan accepted?
Is trying to get a point. What, what was your question?
My point is here, I don't want any. I want, I want, I guess this is not, no gray areas. And they, they, I want to be sure that they live here with this board saying, yes, this site plan right here, the way these buildings are laid out. Except for three that it needs to be broken, it is okay. It has to be clear, written or something.
That's what we've got to vote on right now.
Okay, I'm going to vote. No, no, that's, yeah. Okay, that's what you say.
Now, the site plan, the site plan. We're talking about site plan.
Site plan, what I'm hearing is that this board is generally okay with how these buildings are laid out and how they push and pull and how they're configured.
We haven't officially said that, but let, let's do.
We're not going to vote.
We're just getting a feel from the board. So it's not official.
So I think what Maria is saying, and let me just say it back.
Yes, please.
Is she wants to be sure that this side of the table and that side of the table is on board with the site building group grouping.
Yep.
That you have brought to us tonight.
Yep, yep.
And that if the board is okay with that grouping and if the applicant is okay with that grouping, it's okay to take the next step about working on how there's going to be some perceived break in building three. And then how we might get to the other things that was discussed.
Right.
So I think what Maria is trying to do is tie down that that the building grouping on site is behind us.
Great, yes.
I mean, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes. And two, so if, if we, that one to check.
Okay.
With the variance of, I'm sorry, Bill, with the little variance of building three to establish that we have clarity. Another thing that I think needs to be clear is that there are certain elements that are up to discussion, pergolas, all those modern features that are, so those are parts of an ongoing conversation and will be the next step in the conversation.
I understand what you're saying.
I agree. Yeah, because Chris, what I want to be sure is that it's somehow, this has to be, is going to be written. It's part of, it's on the minutes. You know, that, that clarity is on the minutes. So, so we don't have confusion later. So we can move the project forward.
So your question is, does anybody disagree with what Maria just said on the sitting on the board?
Does everybody, put another way, does everybody on this board agree with the site plan as just expressed? Okay?
Yeah.
That's the question. My answer is yes, I agree.
Yes, I agree with modifications to building three.
Okay.
With the modifications required for building.
Yep.
And I think, you know, the general massing and the kind of level of diversity and roof configurations and the way the building steps from, you know, canal side to railroad side, hopefully those things are also kind of conceptually okay with you because that obviously is also one of the things we're going to rely upon as we take the next step.
Yeah.
So it's not just the site plan, but even to some degree, the, the massing and, and overall forms that we're talking about.
Because once the site civil engineer is getting involved, we want to be able to give them those clear directions so they don't start moving their clothes multiple times.
Well, I think what we've said today.
Yeah.
Is we agree conceptually with what you're trying to do in, in visually pulling down the massive look of these buildings. What we also agree to is there are a lot of little details that we want to see that we've talked about today that we need to have on the table to go forward.
Yeah. Okay. And I think if you also agree that the next logical step is to take a small slice, a one, one group.
Okay.
I mean, whatever we agree is the right amount.
Yeah.
That we develop that with the assumption that if we can meet the standard there, we should be able to meet the standard on.
Yeah, those things should cascade into the other groups. There shouldn't be any question if there's something odd, well, we'll treat that separately. But, you know.
I mean, so my suggestion is group three because that's the one where we want more creativity and growth to be expressed by the board.
Okay.
We'll, we'll think about that. Next is actually probably the easiest building, but the other ones may have some more variety. I mean, I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with group three because.
If I make sense once a day, that's. But when they get into it, I think it's, it, it may not even be the whole group. It may be a section of that. Probably the first group, because I think that's really the main thing that you see. That, that's the. It's coming in.
If you, if you saw group one, group two has some more commonality. So it may be easier, we may have saw a more of it if we did group one, then we.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And I think that it's important for all of us to think, as visioning, that these three groupings represent an, an individual that may walk from one place to another as we walk through Main Street with your dog.
Exactly.
It's, it's not, it's not, it's, it's, it's an experience of, of a series of, it's like a chunk of the village, it's kind of a neighborhood of the village that has different blocks. That's what it's kind of, you're creating basically a whole neighborhood of blocks.
Yes. All right. So a question for you. Do you have a schedule to go before planning and zoning yet?
I wish I did, Bill. We've made an application to the planning board and we're waiting for them to put us on an agenda. Our understanding is that we hope to be on a planning board agenda in the next few weeks. I was hoping this would run more concurrently.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think they're going to see what we've done here. And I think we've made a little bit of progress and use that to, to go forward with them too. But while we're talking about schedule, can we maybe put a calendar date on for us while we're all on the same page? I, I could give these guys a date of maybe two or three weeks to get into that detail. And then maybe we can meet by the end of the month with this board.
Well, we, openly enough, so the end of the month would be, the end of September would be, we can't put a date on it right now.
Right.
Yeah.
And how, how soon do we need to submit before we make this, it's still in form?
About the same time.
We might have gotten here, I don't know how many weeks, but, you know.
Five, five days. That's fine, that's fine. But, but of course, we're going, this next step, we're going to leave a lot more detail.
Yeah, that's going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll talk about schedule and how we can get it on, and it could be meeting in four minutes. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I think we're on the same page.
Great, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for your one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is your first child graduating or?
This is my little child. My, he's looking at colleges now and senior year at Manden. He's excellent tennis player. He's a pro that played in school. My older daughter's a junior. She's always wanted.
Okay, I'm definitely okay with it. Andy, Andy, Andrew, Andrew. No, Andrew, okay. That's very exciting.
Yes. I hereby adjourn this meeting. And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second? Second? Yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Good to see you.
Got it.